Good job.
Testing, testing, five seconds and let's start. What do you think? Okay. Boy, we should have, look at this. We gotta get some more seats in here. Maybe we better have seven of you come up here and sit on the dais and serve as the town council tonight, but welcome. I'm Mayor John Lewis and this is the official student citizen of the month program. Councilmember Jen Daniels, Councilmember Jordan Ray, Councilmember Ben Cooper, Councilmember Jared Taylor, Council Vice Mayor Eddie Cook, and Councilmember Victor Peterson. Give them a big round of applause. We start by letting you know, as we click that to the next slide, we have some family activities. And this is out on our town website. I won't go through each one. You know, I don't see Halloween up there and getting Snickers bars to the, did you know the official candy bar of Gilbert is a Snickers bar? By proclamation, just things, okay? And when you get a Snickers bar, if you want the mayor to taste test it, that's okay too. But so we have a Veterans Day celebration, downtown concert series, the East Valley Veterans Parade in Mesa, invite all of you to attend. Our Gilbert Days coming up with the 5K, the rodeo, and the parade. We don't have the town manager over here, but let me just make note that when you go to the parade on Saturday, November 22nd, the town manager will be wearing, and we love the Arizona Diamondbacks, but the town manager will be wearing a San Francisco Giant jersey. That's because the official, after the Diamondbacks, the official team of Gilbert is the San Francisco Giants, and they beat the St. Louis Cardinals in the National League Championship. Now, the World Series, I know we had some Royals fans, I better move on quickly. And the Gilbert Days Festival. So, those activities, we'll keep that up on the screen for a couple, well, a couple of minutes and we'll put it up again as we conclude. We've got three groups that will come forward, and let's go to that next slide so they can see that. Group one, if your elementary school begins with the first letter of A to J, in just a moment we'll have you come down, you can see group two of your elementary school, K to Z, and then group three will be all those in junior high and high school. You'll come up one at a time. If your group finishes, you can leave if you need to move on. When you receive your bags tonight, there will be several things. One is a coupon, and we have lots of fun places to go to in Gilbert and to eat and treats, and we invite you to do so in celebration of tonight's activities. There happens to be one across the street that has given you a coupon. It's in your bag, it's mikes, burgers, cheesecakes, and ice cream, right across the street. All right. Councilmember Daniels will be announcing the names, but first we need group one up here. So, if your elementary school begins with the letter A to J, please come on down and you can stand right behind me by Councilmember A to J, if your elementary school like Ashland Ranch and Islands. Our first person that Councilmember Daniels will announce will kind of be the pace setter, and that person will come up and stand right here. We will take a picture, and then the person's picture will be out on our website. If you as family members would like to get closer, take pictures, feel free to come right up here, and you may do so, we'll make sure all pictures are taken. So, Councilmember Daniels, let's begin.
Thank you, Mayor, from Ashland Ranch Elementary, Hannah Hepner. From Benjamin Franklin Charter, Braylon Piner. From Burke Elementary, Rihanna Wright. From Carroll Ray Ranch Elementary, Claire Need. From Centennial Elementary, Summer Bernasconi. From Chaparral Elementary School, Tatiana Clayburn. From Christ Greenfield Lutheran School, Anthony Camacho. From Benly Farms Elementary, Frankie Costanzo.
And as you've seen, parents, it's fine to get as close as you like right down in this area, please.
From Gateway Point Elementary, Avery Driscoll. From Gilbert Elementary, Lauren Squires. From Greenfield Elementary, Bennett Lara-Goit. From Highland Park Elementary, Melanie Mannen. From Higley Traditional Academy, Preston Grant Rogers. From Houston Elementary, Dylan Reed. From Islands Elementary, Lauren Quigley. From Greenfield Elementary, Brielle Peterson. Mayor, that concludes group one.
So, group one, we're going to take a picture together right up here so the hall, all the council members can get in, and feel free to take pictures here. I should have been asking what everyone's gonna dress as for Halloween. And that way, for historical purposes, you've got the whole council in the picture. Here goes. Big round of applause for group one, thank you. You may go back to your seats, and as group two comes forward, if you are in elementary school and the first letter of your school is K to Z, come on down, as they're coming down. We also wanted to give special thanks to all of our teachers and any school administrators that might just happen to be here. If you could please stand and be recognized. All teachers, school administrators, thank you. Big round of applause. To the group standing, I think you know our number one asset in Gilbert is our education, so we appreciate all of your efforts. So, Councilmember Daniels, group two, please.
From Mesquite Elementary, Miranda M. Allen. From Neely Traditional Academy, Amanda Catherine Foltz. From Oak Tree Elementary, Bryce Smith. From Patterson Elementary, Kyle Basco. From Pioneer Elementary, Farah Attia. From Playa del Rey Elementary, Sarah Johnson. From Power Ranch Elementary, Malia Demby. From Quartz Hill Elementary, Tyler Reese. From Riggs Elementary, Davina Chen. From Sandtown Elementary, John Paul Murray. From Settlers Point Elementary, Hannah Casillas. From Sonoma Ranch Elementary, Erin Clark. From Spectrum Elementary, Maria Felicia Cristobal. From Town Meadows Elementary, Gage Rasmussen. From Val Vista Academy, Casey Griffith. We like retakes, if you need one, we're good. From Val Vista Lakes Elementary, Zoe Nixon. From Playa del Rey Elementary, Abby Rhodes. And last but not least, Mayor, from Quartz Hill Elementary, Jacob Atcedis.
Councilmember Daniels, we do have one more. I need the brother in the San Francisco Giant hat, can you come on down here? Now, we love the Royals, but this is by official proclamation, the student citizen of the World Series. If we could have a picture, please? And what is your name and what school do you go to?
Jack.
And what school do you go to?
Town Meadows.
Town Meadows, oh, doesn't he look sharp? Big round of applause for Jack, thanks Jack. Group two, we'll invite you to come up here for our group picture. Let's give group two a big round of applause, thank you. And group three, if you're in junior higher or high school, please come on down.
You want me to do them first? We're gonna do these two first, because they're in a different category.
Thank you so much.
Oh, absolutely, glad you guys were here.
Group three, thank you for coming on down, and as we transition, little bit of noise, but that's the energy and excitement of these special student citizens of the month.
The happy group.
So, in council chambers, we continue. Group three, Councilmember Daniels.
From Cooley Middle School, Fernanda Villafana. From Sausman Middle School, Miguel Caballero. From Camp Verde High, Brandon Martinez. From Gilbert Classical Academy, Mohin Patel. From Gilbert High School, William Guthrie. From Gilbert Junior High, Kayden James. From Greenfield Junior High, Polly Homer. From Highland High School, Emma Sokolski. From Mesquite High School, Clayton Trammell. From Mesquite Junior High, Caroline Nicole Ricci. From Payne Junior High, Luke Lavin. From Perry High School, Kyle Gustafson. From South Valley Junior High, Ashley Pollack. And Mayor, that completes group three.
Group three, please come over here. Councilmember Taylor, you stand right there. I don't wanna look too short, so you stand right there. Group three, if you can stay here for just another moment, as older members of our community, sometimes when individuals come down here for student citizen of the month, they don't know exactly why. And you may know or you may not, but there was someone at your school and it represents all who were honored tonight that saw you, saw you doing something very special, and so whatever it was, whatever it is, keep doing it because you are the shining examples of Gilbert, and we appreciate you very much. After we give them one more big round of applause, that will officially conclude our student citizen of the month program, which means that the group can then take you out for ice cream or other things, but then get home and study hard tonight and do everything that mom and dad want. But we thank you, and let's give them a big round of applause, and that concludes our program. Thank you. The formal town council meeting will begin in just a few minutes, you're invited to stay, and if you need to depart, be safe, thank you. You're invited to stay, and if you need to depart, be safe. Thank you. If you can meet me at the podium, please. This will be our five-second warning before we begin. Welcome, my call to order, our October 30, 2014 Gilbert Town Council meeting. We will begin with an invocation. As the agenda says, the invocation may be offered by a person of any religion, faith, belief, or non-belief, as well as council members. A list of volunteers is maintained by the town clerk. An interested person should contact the clerk for further information. Tonight's invocation will be offered by Pastor Oller of the Sunrise Assembly of God Church. He is also one of our fire chaplains. Pastor Oller. Would you stand with me, please? Father, we are so grateful to live in a community such as Gilbert. Thank you for the leaders that you have placed us with, and the educational system that we've just honored many students, and we're just grateful, Lord, for all the amenities that you've provided in this community. We ask for wisdom and decisions that are made tonight, and that affect our community. And we just ask that you will give direction and strength to each of our leaders, and we'll give you thanks for it in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you. Councilmember Ray, the Boy Scouts are here.
Most of Gilbert is here, Mayor. We're fortunate tonight. Do we have Joshua, who's gonna lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor, we will pass the microphone down and have the boys just say their first name and their rank.
Steven, star rank.
Connor, life rank.
Jaden, star rank.
Colin, first class.
Luke, first class.
Joshua, star rank.
Griffin, scout rank.
Max, tenderfoot rank.
Jaren, life rank.
Andrew, first class.
Joe Peterson, scout master.
Brayden, first class.
Alan, first class.
Jackson, star rank.
Brody, first class.
Jared, scout rank.
Paul, tenderfoot.
Curtis Smith, assistant scout master.
Nathan, life scout.
Nick, tenderfoot.
Cole, tenderfoot.
Josh, tenderfoot.
Nathan, star.
Josh, life.
Dean, star.
Parker, second class.
Benjamin, first class.
Alexander, star rank.
Taban, first class.
John, first class.
Tyler, life rank.
Cole.
First class.
Eli, first class.
Brian, first class.
Decker, star.
Logan, first class.
AJ, star.
Mayor, we have a lot of scouts here. I got to teach a lot of them, a citizenship of the community, a couple weeks ago as part of Constitution Week. We're in good hands for years to come with these boys.
Thank you. Big round of applause for our scouts. Next on the agenda is the roll call. We'll turn to our town clerk.
Mayor Lewis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Cooper.
Here.
Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Ray. Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
Coram is present.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson, if you could lead us in Agenda Item Number One, and then we're going to move to Agenda Item Number Six after Number One.
Thanks, Mayor. And just before I read part of this, I just want to recognize all the citizens in Gilbert who came out and helped this last Saturday on Make a Difference Day. It was a wonderful turnout. We had such well-organized and enthusiastic volunteers. We had lots of great projects done around town, and just we want to recognize them, and that's really a perfect segue into the proclamation. Whereas the town of Gilbert is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas the town of Gilbert acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America Foundation to create 500 extra-mile cities and states in America, and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1, 2014. Now therefore, Mayor of the town of Gilbert, John Lewis, does hereby proclaim November 1, 2014 to be Extra Mile Day in Gilbert, Arizona. And he urges each individual in the community to take time on this day to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but also acknowledge all those around who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, or world a better place. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. And thank you for your leadership with our four city major projects last Saturday on Make a Difference Day. One group that, well, two groups tied to Agenda Item Number Six. In our student citizen of the month, which we just concluded at the start, we put up some activities that are going to be occurring over the next few weeks. Couple of those activities have to do with an organization, Gilbert Promotional Corporation. For years, they have made Gilbert Days some of the most fantastic events that have occurred in the history of Gilbert, and we thank them for that. So please notice that there's a Gilbert Days rodeo, parade, festival that are coming up, and that's based on a tradition started by the Gilbert Promotional Corporation many years ago. And with that, to the person who's going to take care of Agenda Item Number Six, Kurt, come on up here. We'll keep that on the screen for a moment, and there's this other Hela River Indian Tribe community that we wanted to talk about. Please.
Thank you, Mayor Lewis. Could I please have representatives from Gilbert Promotional Corporation, and representatives from the Hela River Indian Community, please come up? And while they're coming up, I'd like to just give a brief introduction about what we're doing in this item. Yeah, come on up. Back in 2002, there was some legislation passed called Proposition 202. And in that proposition, a compact was made with the tribes located in Arizona and the state of Arizona that gives the tribes, it leaves it up to them how to redistribute a portion of their annual contributions to the state. And the reason we're all up here today is because last year, the Gilbert Promotional Corporation applied for a grant and was successful. And they received a two-year, a multi-year award each year for the next two years, $32,575. This check represents the first installment of that grant. And now I would like to start with the Gilbert Promotional Corporation. Pass the microphone down and have everybody introduce themselves. And then after that, we'll have Councilman Robert Stone from the Hela River Indian Community. We'll have him say a few words as well. Councilman Stone represents the 5th District of the Hela River Indian Community. So, we'll start with you, Ed.
My name is Ed Musgraves. I'm the vice president this year for Gilbert Promotional Corporation. Our president, Bobby Padilla, couldn't make it. He's working. The grant here, when we applied for it, one of our members filled out all the paperwork, did all the research on it, and Patty Fields, and her, and Pam Thielander, all made this possible for us, so we really appreciate everything they've done.
Hi, my name is Sammy Miles, and I'm your 2014 Gilbert Days Rodeo Queen. And we're so proud to be partners with the town of Gilbert, and we're so thankful to Hela River for supporting us, so we can put on the Gilbert Days rodeo.
And I'm Pam Thielander, a longtime member of the GPC.
I'm Kendra Deegan. I'm the secretary of the GPC.
My name is James Strick, board member of the GPC.
I'm Brian Hopper. I'm a board member of the GPC.
Hi, I'm Patty Williams. I'm a member of 35 Years and their treasure.
Hi, I'm Kathy Padilla. I'm a lifetime member.
Delinda Foster.
Thank you.
Hela River. We appreciate you very much.
I'm Patty Field, and I help with the Pony Express also. And I also want to thank Chantel, who wasn't able to be here unfortunately, that also her and Pam and I did a lot of work with that grant, and I want to thank the Hela River Indian Community for that as well. Thank you.
And Councilman Stone, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you. Good evening. It's so wonderful to be here amongst our neighbors just across the way here, and I'm delighted to be here. And on behalf of our governor, Mr. Gregory Mendoza wasn't able to be here, so they picked me, and I know how to get here, even though the town has grown quite a bit, just like our own community. But it is really an honor and with great pride to assist in this way with the 12% revenue sharing with the state compact and positive impacts in our community. It's really great and from our community to yours, and we're networking and establishing more relationships, and that is really good for humankind, and just to say that. And we're definitely, again, very happy and proud to assist you in this. Appreciate it. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you very much, Councilman. It means a lot that you're here. Now, before we move on to the next item on the agenda, we are going to have a real quick ceremonial big check signing, and then we'll have you present it to the Gilbert Promotional Corporation, take just a couple more pictures, and move on to the next item.
This is our play-by-play. Councilmember Stone is now that strong left hand signing. And there it is. Here we go. to it. All year round. I should be wearing boots to council meetings, shouldn't I? How about the hat? Hat too? Okay. Thank you. To those two groups, thank you. Councilmember Taylor, we'll move on with our Agenda Item Number Three. Oh, Two. We're going back to Two. Agenda Item Number Two.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to invite Phil. I don't know if I'm going to say this name correctly, Babadiya and Jim Lycus. Come on up here. Thank you for joining me here, gentlemen. This is a proclamation about Veterans Day Week. Veterans Week, I suppose. Could you tell us a little bit about your association with this particular proclamation here?
Thank you. Thank you for allowing us to be here and announce. On November the 6th, that's next Thursday, at 11:00 a.m., we will be having the Veterans Day Celebration right out front on the municipal lawn. Goes from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Our emcee this year is Eileen Benz, Lieutenant Colonel, and our speaker is Ted Voat, who's the Director of Arizona Veteran Services here in Arizona.
Thank you. Anything you'd like to add? Just like to mention, this is our 10th Annual Veterans Day Event. We begin at 11. We have high school choir, high school band. There'll be ceremony, and we'll have free lunch afterwards. So everyone's invited. Thank you very much. Thank you, gentlemen. And we're pleased to proclaim the week of November 3rd as Veterans Week in Gilbert, Arizona. Veterans Day, November 11th, set aside annually for celebrating our military veterans, and was begun as the commemoration of the end of hostilities of World War I, which went into effect on the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month. And there's some other wonderful things in here, but would you please join me in welcoming and recognizing and thanking these two good men for helping us promote Veterans Week here in Gilbert?
I'd like to invite Dave Lebut up to the front, please. Dave, welcome tonight. We appreciate having you here with us. And before we kind of go through this proclamation, why don't you introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about what we're doing here tonight?
Thank you, and thank you for inviting me. I am a volunteer with the American Diabetes Association. And November every year is National Diabetes Month. So anybody that has diabetes can learn more and really focus on it during the month of November. I've been involved with the American Diabetes Association for 13 years as a volunteer. Fortunately, I do not have diabetes, although my family members do, including my wife for 25 years, and many other members in our family on both sides. When I started with the Diabetes Association, there were in the United States about 16 million people affected by it. Now there are over 29 million. It is a growing epidemic, and there are like 79,000 or 79 million people that have prediabetes, which means if they don't change lifestyle, they will become diabetic. So it's something that I feel strongly that we need to get rid of and work towards the mission of the American Diabetes Association, which is to prevent and cure diabetes and to improve the lives of all people affected by it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Those are sobering statistics. And looking at even a couple more here, 500,000 children and adults in Arizona have diabetes. And it's just for those that want to learn a little bit more, a serious disease with potentially life-threatening complications such as heart disease, stroke, blindness, kidney disease, and amputation. And recent estimates project that as many as one in three American adults will have diabetes in 2050 if current trends continue. And so an increase in community awareness is necessary, really necessary, to put a stop to the diabetes epidemic. And therefore, Mayor Lewis does hereby proclaim November 2014 to be American Diabetes Month in Gilbert, Arizona. He encourages all Americans to recognize American Diabetes Month and join in the American Diabetes Association Stop Diabetes Movement to confront, fight, and most importantly, change the future of this deadly disease. So thank you again for being here tonight. And we'll invite the mayor over for a picture as we present this proclamation.
Thank you. It is a true honor and pleasure to invite Michaela Skinner to the front. Come on up, Michaela. You may not recognize her right now, but you will want to know this young woman. Michaela Skinner is a champion, and she portrays that in every aspect of her life. She is a gold medalist in gymnastics. She has represented the United States, this great country, in both the Pan-Angles and in the Worlds. And she has done well. She has gold medals to prove it. Some of the great things about what Michaela has done, Michaela's a Gilbert resident, and she didn't get to where she is alone. She has two great parents right here on the front row who have been with her every step of the way. So real quick, I want Michaela to tell us, because inquiring minds want to know, this will be the easiest interview you've ever had, by the way. Inquiring minds want to know, how did you get to where you are?
Well, it definitely took a lot of dedication, time, and effort, missing activities and family things, and just being in the gym all the time with my great coaches, and especially my parents there to push me along the way, and all my family to support me. And just, yeah.
So I asked Michaela if she ever thought she was going to be where she is today. And she said, no. She never thought that she was going to be here, representing the United States of America. But her coaches saw potential in her, her parents saw potential in her, and then she decided to capitalize on that. So I hope all the scouts and all the young people in the audience are listening, because it took incredible work, hard work. She told you how much she sacrificed to be able to get to where she is. So we have this awesome certificate to give you today. We want you to know how much we support you and that we are cheering for you here in Gilbert. So we hereby extend an official congratulations to Michaela Skinner in recognition of her achievement in being selected as a member of the Seven Woman Team that represented the United States during the October 3rd through 12th World Gymnastics Championships in Nanning, China. In addition to winning a team gold medal, Michaela also won a bronze medal in vaulting and placed fourth in the floor exercise event at the World Championships. Further recognition is due her for capturing four gold medals in the team vault, floor exercise, and all-around events at the 2014 Senior Pan-American Championships, August 27th to September 1st, 2014, in Toronto, Ontario, Canada. We wish to acknowledge your hard work and outstanding achievement in becoming an ambassador for your sport, an ambassador for the United States of America, and an ambassador for Gilbert. So we really appreciate you and all that you've done. Keep up the hard work, and we'll see her in the next Summer Olympics, I'm sure of it.
Well, I would love to invite one of our favorite Team Gilbert members to the front, Susan Goodwin. Will you please come to the front? I'm not sure if you knew about this or not. Susan, can you just introduce yourself to the folks here to know who you are?
My name's Susan Goodwin. I'm with the law firm of Curtis Goodwin Sullivan Udon and Schwab. And we worked with Gilbert for many, many years and continued to do so in other capacities.
And we appreciate that. Can we, for that, can we just have a round of applause of Susan's commitment to the town? The one thing that Susan didn't share with you is that Susan was included as in the 2015 Edition of the Best Lawyers in America. She was number one, is that right? But she was one of the best. So we have a certificate of congratulations, and I'd like to read this for you. In recognition of her accomplishment of being included in the 2015 Edition of the Best Lawyers in America for her practice area of municipal law, Susan receives this special honor because of an extraordinary high survey rating provided by her peers. She has earned the respect of her peers for abilities, professionalism, and integrity. This is a mark of distinction, and we are truly pleased that Susan has achieved this prestigious recognition. On behalf of the Town Council, we applaud Susan and offer this citation. As an expression of our pride and our accomplishment, we wish Susan every success in the future. Thank you, Susan.
Agenda Item Number Seven.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to ask the members of Gilbert's Office of Management and Budget to come up. This is Dawn Irvine, the Director of the Office of Management and Budget, and Mary Vincent, who is a budget analyst with the town. They were recently awarded by the ICMA, which is the International City Managers Association, a certificate of distinction in exemplifying the standards established by the ICMA Center for Performance Analytics in the application of performance data to local government management, including training, verification, public reporting, planning, and decision-making, networking, and accountability. It was presented at the 100th Annual ICMA Conference in Charlotte of this year, and we thank Dawn and Mary for their hard work. Over the period of about the last year, Dawn, year and a half, you and your team put together a performance benchmark report where you helped all the departments within the Town of Gilbert benchmark best practices with their peers locally and nationally, so we could understand where we fall and what we can do to raise and elevate the level of our service and the quality of our services. Anything else you'd like to add from that, Dawn?
Well, as Patrick mentioned, this really was a collaborative effort of all departments across the entire Town of Gilbert, and a reflection of everyone's commitments to truly become best-in-class. So what we found was each and every department throughout the town identified what they considered best-in-class, not just here in Arizona, but across the nation. And it was specific to every line of service, so that Gilbert residents really and truly get the best-in-class service by being here. So this was an exhaustive effort of all the members of the Gilbert team, and we greatly appreciate all of their help.
Thank you, Dawn. If I could join, ask everybody to join us in a round of applause for Dawn and Mary and their great recognition. You know, the mayor was commenting on Mary's outfit tonight, and I did as well when I first saw her. I was questioning the color combination. The mayor thinks it's the San Francisco Giants. Mary says it's Halloween.
Anyway you look at it, it's high class.
It's high class, absolutely. Best in class.
Next on the agenda, communication from citizens. Citizens may comment on matters within the jurisdiction of the town, but not on the agenda. The council's response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented upon, or asking that a matter be put on future agenda. Vice Mayor Cook, we have one request. Is that correct?
Yes, Mayor. We have one that would like to speak. We'd like to welcome Joe Guzik to the podium.
Thank you. And Joe, if you could officially state your name for the record, and if you are a Gilbert resident.
And you have three minutes.
Very good. My name is Joe Guzik, and I am a proud Gilbert resident. Mayor Lewis, Town Council, Team Gilbert, Gilbert residents. As I always come, I always come to, always want to educate. Now, about a month ago, the mayor, his proud San Francisco Giants, had a bet with the Town Manager, Patrick Baner, with his proud St. Louis Cardinals. In that bet was the opportunity for the loser to wear the jersey of their other one on the Gilbert Day Parade. Now, that's not the most impressive thing. The other, the most impressive thing was the loser was going to make a pledge to help raise $1,000 for the Gilbert Education Foundation. The Gilbert Education Foundation is the foundation that helps the children and the teachers receive scholarships at Gilbert Public Schools. So with that, I'm going to present Town Manager Baner a $20 check. And I'm going to challenge the town between now and the Gilbert Day Parade, when he has to wear his Giants uniform, maybe not his, maybe the mayor's, uniform. I would challenge the community to step up and reach out to Patrick. And if it be a dollar, or $5, or $10, help him get to that $1,000 pledge. So with that, Patrick, I hope that helps you out a little bit. Second thing I'd like to share with you guys. The other day, I had an opportunity to see a feed on a Facebook page, and it was for Council-Elect Bridget Peterson. And I want to compliment the town. I really do. I actually mentioned this at the Gilbert Public School Board meeting the other day. Before she's even going to take the oath, you are providing her training. That is what a high-performance organization does, day in and day out. There is no doubt in my mind why we're 22nd in the country. This organization is one of the best, and it is showing, it is doing it. I don't care if it's a private business or a public business. It is one of the best in the country, and I want to compliment the Town of Gilbert employees and the Town Council for that. The last thing I would like to share with you is Make a Difference Day. There are a lot of people to thank on that, but there is one individual in this room that day in and day out is the beacon of light. It is Victor Peterson, Councilmember Victor Peterson. He kindly reaches out to people and asks them to give of themselves, time and time again. And people need to know that that is something that does help us make who we are in the Town of Gilbert. So I thank you. I appreciate all your efforts, and you duly do respect. A round of applause. Would you all join me with a round of applause?
And I did that in three minutes, Mayor.
Thank you. I really liked that first part, too. So we support Patrick, and he'll look great in that San Francisco Giant jersey. I'm looking forward to it.
Mayor, the town attorney's advised me he's found a loophole, which I don't have to wear that jersey.
Motion dies for lack of anyone seconding that, right? Thank you. Vice Mayor Cook, I believe that concludes all the requests in this section of the agenda.
That's correct, Mayor.
On the consent calendar, the agenda lists that items on the consent calendar may be approved by a single motion unless removed to the request of council for further discussion or action. Other items on the agenda may be added to the consent calendar and approved under a single motion. Vice Mayor Cook, we have requests for 10, 13, and 15 to pull those at this moment, and then we're going to add to then we're going to add to it, so please, continue.
We'd like to move that we approve Agenda Items 8, 9, 11, 12, 14, 16 through 18. And then I would like Councilmember Daniels to motion for 19, and Councilmember Peterson for number 20.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Cook. I move that we consider appointing one alternate member to the Planning Commission to complete the remainder of the term ending June 1, 2015. That individual is Todd Hall.
And I move to appoint one regular member to the Industrial Development Authority to complete the remainder of the term ending in March 11, 2019, and that is Domingo Santos, Jr.
With the motion made, is there a second?
Second.
With that motion seconded, please vote. Thank you. That's approved with a seven oh vote. To the council, Agenda Item Number 10. On consent calendar items, we normally do not have comments from the public, but there has been a request, and it would be one person, and that would be three minutes allocated. Are you okay with that? Okay. Vice Mayor Cook, continue, please. And this would be Agenda Item Number 10.
Thank you, Mayor. We'd like to invite John Karlczak to the podium.
And John, as we did on the communication from citizens, if you can state your name for the record, if you're a Gilbert resident, then you'll be given three minutes. Please, John.
My name is John Karlczak. I am a resident of Scottsdale, Arizona. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I am John Karlczak. I'm the Vice President of Operations for Rural Metro, which is the parent company of Southwest Ambulance. I have several of my teammates here this evening. Mr. Tom Milton, who's our Director of Community Relations.
Let's have them stand, please, Tom.
I have Shay Cross, our Central Arizona Project Manager. And then I've got David Jacobelli, who is our General Manager for the East Valley. Mayor, the reason why I'm here tonight is I wanted to take the opportunity to say thank you for the opportunity to serve your community. We've had a great partnership for many years, and I recall just over three years ago when we signed the agreement for the Regional Emergency Transportation System. As you know, we've been working diligently throughout the period of that time, and again, want to say that I believe that the citizens are getting world-class service from both the Town of Gilbert and the Southwest Ambulance crews. About earlier, about 90 days ago, the contract came up for extension, and there were three things that our organization wanted to do, three simple things, and they were related to regulatory compliance. The first one was we wanted to put a process in place for one-to-one supply exchange so when we're on the scene, we can show Medicare that we billed a patient for an item that was used by the fire department, and then we replaced it. So we've been working to do that and get that process in place. The second thing that we wanted to address in the contract was to share, we have a contract administrator that our company pays for. Again, from a regulatory perspective, we want to make sure that we're demonstrating this person is an employee of the City of Mesa, and we're paying for it, and want to make sure that we can demonstrate that our organization and all the partners in the Regional Emergency Transportation System are getting value from that position. And then finally, the last thing that we wanted to do was have, from a patient care and clinical excellence perspective, there's a clause in the contract that says if it is a non-regional emergency transportation system unit, we are fined $1,000 if it transports a patient in the regional emergency transportation system. We simply ask that, if in the event that that would happen, and let me give you a very brief example, that would be if an ambulance is driving through, and there's an emergency call, and a patient needs an ambulance right then there, we just want the opportunity to appeal and explain why we made the decision that we did. So finally, we appreciate the opportunity for you to give us up to 90 days for an extension. We believe that we've come to agreement and alignment with these three items, and look forward to renewing the agreement, and think we can do it relatively quickly. Thank you.
Thank you, John. With that, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve Agenda Item 10.
Is there a second?
Second.
With that motion seconded, please vote. That's approved with a seven oh vote. Thank you. Let the partnership continue.
Mayor, the second, was that Victor? Victor was the second. Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number 13, Councilmember Peterson.
Mayor, I don't have a comment on this. Just pulled to be able to vote on it separately. We've had this discussion enough times.
Any discussion before I entertain a motion? I entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve Agenda Item 13.
Second. With that motion seconded, please vote. That's approved with a five to vote. Thank you. Agenda Item Number 15, Councilmember Peterson.
Mayor, as you all might remember, we had a discussion about this in study session. There was just one little tweak. I think that the plan is great. I actually had this whole idea about how to recalculate it, send it on to staff. Haven't heard a response, but quite frankly, it was maybe ill-conceived. There is one little adjustment I think staff agrees with, and we can confirm that if we need to. But on the prioritization criteria on the last page of the document, it awards 10 points in the funding category to items that have no identified funding source, and I just find that odd. If we could just revise that to be no points in those cases, that would be great. That's my only hope on that, Mayor.
Thank you. To especially to councilmembers, Councilmember Cooper, Councilmember Daniels, who were part of the transportation planning process, any feedback on that before we vote?
I think it'd just be helpful to hear staff's logic, the logic that they used. And I shared a little bit of what I thought was logic at study session as it pertains to this, in that we may not have an identified funding source, but if it does move up in priority, either based on feedback from community members or data that we've received from both PD and fire about the safety of the intersection, or the road project, or whatever the case may be, that I think we will want some leeway in order to make some changes to the prioritization. So maybe if I could just ask staff to provide us with a methodology behind it, it might be helpful.
Please.
I'm Leslie Bubkey, the Assistant Town Traffic Engineer. Eric Gaderian would usually be here to speak to you about these things, but he was happily called away for family responsibilities today. The priority matrix, or the rubric that was established and proposed in the plan, is intended to tie together, one second, please, to help prioritize the potential projects for inclusion in the CIP, and it's a methodology that we hope will be able to prioritize needed improvements of different types, comparing a trail improvement to a transit project. There are some elements that are very easy to quantify, such as safety or congestion, and there are some that are much slipperier, like quality of life or economic development impact. And so the criteria that you see in the plan was that attempt to make a system to weigh those options. As far as the discussion that I believe Eric Gaderian intended to have with Victor Peterson regarding the scoring of something that doesn't have funding, Eric, it's my understanding that the zero level, a zero score for, frankly, any category could be possible, 0 to 36 for any of them. So if the council would like that, a change to the plan, staff can support it. Are there other questions?
And Councilmember Cooper, did you want to speak at this point?
Maybe hear what Dawn has to say.
Please, Dawn.
Thank you, Mayor. Dawn Buckland with the Office of Management and Budget, and one of the things that I did want to just share is the comfort level that we have with that, and we can go either with the zero at that point, or with the 10 points associated with that. One thing I wanted to bring to the council's attention is with our new process with the capital improvement program, including those projects which would be served by this matrix, in many cases, the departments are submitting them to the budget office for the budget office to assign those funding sources. So if they have a dedicated funding source, they would be identifying it at that time through the matrix. That doesn't mean that we would not have an identified funding source as a town at that point in time. So we in the budget office are comfortable if we were to proceed with that 10-point allocation. It's not going to throw the overall scoring off. It's going to still kind of give that relative level of magnitude, if you will, for the prioritization of the projects, but just knowing that some of those funding sources are assigned after the departments have assessed that prioritization.
Councilmember Cooper.
Mayor, that was generally what I was thinking as well, is I'm really focused more on needs when it comes to this, and having those boil to the surface. A lot of, in my experience on the Transportation Policy Committee at the MAG level, I mean, a lot of these projects, the funding is determined a little bit later on in the process. It doesn't mean there wasn't a need, though, and so that will help these bubble up. Obviously, we won't do a project if there isn't funding, so to me, I don't think it, I personally don't feel like we need to make a change from what the committee did, and with all the public input and all of that. I feel pretty good about where we're at.
Any other comments? I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve the transportation, or we adopt the Town of Gilbert Transportation Master Plan as presented.
Second.
With that motion seconded, please vote. That's approved with a seven oh vote. Thank you. We move to the public hearing, and Vice Mayor Cook, if you could, the Agenda Item 22 and 23, address the request from the applicant on those two items.
22 and 23 has been requested to be continued to the November 13 meeting.
I will entertain a motion on that request.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, with that motion seconded, please vote. That request is approved with a seven oh vote. We have a public hearing on Items 21 and 23 through 28. Vice Mayor Cook lets me know that on 28, we have requests to speak, and so if we're talking 21 and 23 through 27, do we have councilmembers that wish to have discussion on those items?
24.
24.
25.
24 and 25, or just 25? Okay. All right, thank you. Any others besides 25? And we don't have anyone who wishes to speak, and so I would like to open, well, as stated on the agenda, in order to comment on a public hearing item, you must fill out a public comment form indicating the item number on which you wish to be heard. Once the hearing is closed, there will be no further public comment unless requested by a member of the council. After the public hearing, the council may act on all items, not requiring additional staff, public, or council member comment with a single vote. Because in our study session on Tuesday, we had a chance as a council to discuss many of these items, and we do not have any requests from the public to speak on 21, 24, 26, 27, I will open the public hearing on those agenda items and close the public hearing on Agenda Items 21, 24, 26, and 27, and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve Agenda Items 21, 24, 26, and 27.
Is there a second? With that motion seconded, please vote. Those items are approved with a seven oh vote. I now open the public hearing on Agenda Item 25. And Councilmember Peterson, did you wish to have a presentation or just some questions?
I don't think so, unless others want one. We talked about it in the study session. I just wanted to be able to add those few words that staff provided to give some clarity about regulating between one user and another, not regulating a user within himself, if you will. So that was it. Other than that, I'm ready to make a motion.
Councilmember Taylor, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted, for the benefit of the council, to make sure we saw the wording on the corporate flags, you know, my favorite topic here. But I think it's important, you know, when we have big projects and we're trying to have good economic development, that, you know, we welcome these companies, and they have a chance to strengthen their brand. Look at that, real time. Thank you, Jordan. Jordan, would you like to just say a couple of words there, if that's okay, Mayor?
Please.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, Councilman Taylor. We had the opportunity to work with Councilman Taylor on a slight tweak to this language that staff fully supports, and of course, the concept is temporary basis, special activities are occurring. We would allow different types of corporate flags on a single site, so it makes sense, and staff has drafted the language with the councilmen's assistance and ready to go forward.
Thank you. So on that note, I will close the public hearing on Agenda Item 25 and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve Item 25 with the two revisions that staff has provided, the one on the corporate flags and the one on the outdoor runs.
Thank you. Okay, with that motion seconded, please vote. That's approved with a seven oh vote. Thank you. I now open the public hearing on Agenda Item 28, and this is the e-cigarette topic. On Tuesday at our study session, we had a presentation, and I think when I turned to the council, we felt like that was adequate, and so I'll turn to Vice Mayor Cook, and now have you facilitate the individuals who will come forward to speak, and it sounds like we've got a total of six.
That's correct, Mayor.
And so with the math on that, two minutes apiece. Does that sound okay?
Two minutes will be fine.
Okay, please.
Mayor, we'd like to invite Charles, I believe it's Pinto, to the podium. And Charles, if you can share your name and where you're resident at. And you have two minutes.
My name is Charles Pinto. I am a proud citizen of Gilbert, and I am a business owner in Gilbert. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor, and everybody else up on the bench there. Forty years ago, I started smoking because it was the cool thing to do, and thankfully, somebody brought me to an e-cigarette a year and a half ago, and I was able to quit smoking. And I created a business because of my passion for this topic, and I've created three businesses here in the valley. I love what I do for people. I get them to quit smoking and stop using nicotine. As of today, I am seven months nicotine-free and a proud signer of Prudential Life Insurance as a nonsmoker. I beat it, and I was never able to do that without this device. I want to be able to vape wherever I can vape to tell others to do the same thing. I don't think it should be controlled, because we were controlled for 40 years by the big tobacco companies, and the big tobacco companies didn't let us know there was an e-cigarette that was created on August 17, 1965. That's when it was invented, and for 50 years, we were hidden from this product. And I don't have to have emphysema today, or COPD today, or land in Gilbert Mercy Hospital. I didn't need any of that. I could have broke this habit years and years ago. And I ask you guys, as a business owner, and as a resident, and as a proud man today, to let everybody quit smoking, because it's a terrible disease. We don't stop anybody else from fixing their bad habits. This is a great way for us to look at this community, including the young ones, and say, if you're going to create this habit, do it with zero nicotine, because everybody picks up a bad habit at some point in their lives, whether it's bananas or Diet Coke. It's going to happen. I ask you all to really think about this tonight, because I go around proud and tell people my story, and I've created an unbelievable team of people that have quit smoking. Thank you.
Thanks, Charles. Mayor, we'd like to welcome to the podium Hud Rhodes. And Hud, if you could please share with us your residency you're from, and you have two minutes.
My name is Hud Rhodes. I'm a resident of Gilbert. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. I come to you as a business owner also, who owns a vape shop, two vape shops, one in Mesa, one in the County Island, not necessarily in Gilbert, but pretty close to it. But I have a lot of residents of Gilbert who come to our shop and who do quit smoking. I've never smoked a day in my life. My father smoked for 50 years, and the only reason I got into this business is because somebody gave my dad an opportunity to use an e-cigarette, and he quit smoking after 50 years. He had a quadruple bypass when I was in 7th grade, a triple bypass 10 years later, ex-marine, 73-years-old, swore he would never quit, but he did because of the e-cigarette. We've got hundreds of people to stop smoking between the ages of 18 and 75 to 80. It's a great way to stop smoking. Two years ago, I had the opportunity to hold my mother's hand while she died of COPD in a hospital in Flagstaff. She was 67-years-old. If she had the opportunity that we are offering to people now, she would have been around a little bit longer. And all I'm asking from you is take into consideration the lives and the people who are truly trying to quit smoking by using this, and don't limit where they can and they can't vape. they can't vape. Research goes both ways on this, and we've talked about this today, I've talked with many of you about this today. You don't know the, I don't know the answer, who knows the answer? We probably won't know for five or 10 years. All I do know is I haven't seen anybody die from vaping. I've seen plenty of people, including my mother, die from smoking, and any help we can give to those people to extend their life and to get them off of smoking is greatly appreciated. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mayor, we'd like to welcome to the podium Mike Evans. And then on deck will be Matt Morales.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm Mike Evans. I am a Gilbert resident. I'm here speaking on behalf of Arizona's Concerned About Smoking, one of the state's oldest grassroots lobby organizations for a tobacco-free way of life. I want to do three things. I want to remind you of Gilbert's history on this subject, where we were one of the first municipalities to pass laws about smoking in the workplace for town employees back in the 1980s. We were one of the first municipalities to pass an ordinance about having smoke-free public places. I was sitting up there when we did that 13 and a half years ago. At that time, we did not include the bars with it, and I said I was fine with that because we'd come back and get the bars later, and the citizens of Arizona did that in 2006 with a statewide ordinance. That ordinance is the floor, not the ceiling, and so any municipality can add to that ordinance. I would like to remind you that the folks that are talking about this are talking about stopping smoking, but they're not talking about stopping using nicotine. And nicotine is still one of the most addictive substances that we know to man. If you give a rat that has experience with cocaine, heroin, meth, alcohol, tobacco, give them their choice of nicotine or anything else, they'll take nicotine every time. When you go to drug rehab, alcohol rehab, they don't take your cigarettes away from you because it's easier to get you off of the hard drugs than it is to get you off of nicotine. Kills one-third of all the people that regularly use it. So you're hearing a dodge from the e-cigarette industry, and that dodge is that it keeps people from smoking. So finally, I'd like you to be bold. The ordinance that you're looking at is proposed to cover town facilities and have it be vapor-free in town facilities. And I think if it's good enough for the Town of Gilbert employees and the citizens of Gilbert in the town facilities, that it's good enough for the public places and the workplaces as well, and strengthen the ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, we'd like to welcome Matt Morales to the podium, and on deck will be Philip Carpenter.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. My name is Matt Morales. I'm a resident of Phoenix, and I'm the Executive Director of the National Association of Vaping Businesses. We're a trade association actually based here in Arizona, representing the needs and concerns of all of the brick and mortar vape shops and the designers and everybody who's come forward and advanced this industry. First off, thank you. It's very, very, very not often that we actually see a regulation designed correctly. Us at the NAVB, we believe in self-determination of small businesses. If I'm a restaurant owner, if I'm a bar owner, I have the right to run my businesses I see fit. If I want to stop vaping in my bar, I put up a sign, and the people of the vape community have great etiquette. They see that there, they understand, they're not going to go in and forcefully vape in someone's place. But we also believe in the etiquette of a government-established building, and we like the way that you've written this thus far. One thing I would like to address, though, is one thing that you have been very good about is listening to our needs and concerns over the last several months and being very good about reviewing the science behind what we have. As you've heard before from a couple of other of the owners and people who've gone from smoking to vaping, nicotine is not the substance you have to be worried about. It's the other 316 chemicals that big tobacco places in those cigarettes to keep you hooked. One of the things that we've seen and observed, and you can see in some of the packets that we've sent you and emailed you, is that as people consume nicotine alone without the addition of those additives, they slide off. And that's how you have people who say, I am no longer on nicotine, because the body naturally rejects it after a while, and you can have this safe alternative path away from smoking. So what we'd like to say from the National Association of Vaping Businesses is thank you for your work on this, thank you for developing a regulation that helps people continue in their lives and find a path away from smoking. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Mayor, we'd like to welcome Philip Carpenter to the podium, and then on deck will be Will Conan.
Good evening. My name is Philip Carpenter, and I'm a resident of Chandler, and I'm the Executive Director of Arizona's Concerned About Smoking. Good evening, Mayor Lewis and Gilbert councilmembers. Once amended, this protection will protect and promote public health in a number of ways. One, helps avoid confusion and difficulty with enforcing Smoke Free Arizona, which prohibits conventional cigarette smoking in indoor spaces. Two, protecting people from the potential harms of second-hand e-cigarette vapor, which can contain harmful chemicals. Three, ensuring that a behavior mimicking cigarette smoking does not make smoking normal again. And four, setting a consistent town-wide standard for certain workplaces so that expectations for managers, employees, clients, visitors, students, and residents are clear. The city of Tempe and the town of Guadalupe have already amended their tobacco control policies recently to include e-cigarettes, and we strongly encourage Gilbert to do the same for all Gilbert workplaces. In closing, I feel regular cigarettes and e-cigarettes should not be used in Gilbert parks and soccer fields. If adults are using regular cigarettes and e-cigarettes, what message does that send for our children? Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, we'd like to invite Will Conan to the podium.
Mayor Lewis, Vice Mayor Cook, councilmembers, my name is Will Cohen. I'm a Phoenix resident. I am the Executive Director of the Vapea Vet Project. We are a 501(c)(3) charitable organization based here in Arizona that provides nicotine alternatives to veterans and deployed service members. To date, we have served over 1,000 individuals and helped every single one of them quit the tobacco habit. We've done this through e-cigarettes. We've done this with the support of cities that provide sensible legislation like that has been presented here today. We have done this because those councilmembers refuse to listen to bad science. We've heard today that nicotine is incredibly addictive and that it's so dangerous, but what do they hand out when you're trying to kick the habit of smoking? Nicotine patches, nicotine inhalers, nicotine gum. If nicotine is so inherently dangerous and so inherently addictive, then why do they have step-down programs where they give you less and less nicotine? Nicotine by itself is not the dangerous toxin in a cigarette. All of the tests that have shown on the dangerous habits of smoking are through tobacco cigarettes themselves, and it's those additives that are harmful. Please, take a minute and read the science, look at all the good we are doing. We are the first and only charity in this industry, based here in Arizona, and I would hate to lose that to legislation that hurts the good we are trying to do for the men and women that serve our country. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, that's all we have that would like to speak.
I just confirm, I look in council chambers, so, okay, thank you. To our town attorney, as we talked about on Tuesday, could you clarify for those here in council chambers and the public listening, what the ordinance would do and what the scope is?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council. The ordinance proposed before you tonight makes a minor change in that it provides a definition for electronic cigarette as any product containing or delivering nicotine or other similar substance. It can be used to simulate smoking through an inhalation of vapor aerosol from the product. It also defines government buildings as any enclosed area owned and operated by the Town of Gilbert and used for governmental purposes. And then it simply provides a prohibition that the use of an electronic cigarette is not allowed in those government buildings, I mean, buildings owned by the town and that are used for governmental purposes. And that's the only change provided for in the proposal.
Thank you. Any council discussion? Councilmember Peterson?
Just had a couple questions for staff.
And that might be town attorney at this point, sir.
Counselman, Mayor and Councilman Peterson, that may be me.
Okay. Just trying to see, have we had any complaints related to any incidences at this point, somebody vaping in a public building, that someone's complained about the nuisance? Can you tell me about that?
Mayor, Councilman Peterson, I'm not aware of any. That does not mean that I, that I'm the most informed person on that subject, but I'm not aware of any.
That's, thank you. Do we know, has there been discussion about what's referred to as MODS in the context of vaping? Do you know what that is?
M-O-D-S, sir?
Yeah.
I don't know what that is.
I guess there's different kinds where you can actually intend to expand the amount of vapor that comes off of them, and I'm wondering if maybe we, there's kinds that probably don't do enough vapor to annoy anyone, and then there's other kinds that we definitely would want to regulate. I'm just wondering if we've gotten into the details enough to know the difference and whatnot.
Mayor, Councilman Peterson, I do know that several focus group meetings were held by, with representatives in the industry, as well as the Chamber of Commerce and other groups, and I do know that many issues were discussed at those. I don't know if MODS or technique in vaping were discussed, but I know that several opportunities were given for everybody to present all questions of interest.
All right, thank you.
Vice Mayor Cook, over, please.
Mayor, and Councilman Peterson, I did receive words that we have received complaints in, with regards to public buildings, and those would be the public buildings operated by the Parks and Recreation Department.
Can you give us a sense of, like, how many and for how long we've been getting those?
If we wait momentarily, I might get a text.
I'm just trying to get a sense of the problem.
Melanie, I see you in the back. Do you have feedback on that? Please. This is another San Francisco Giant.
Yes.
County member.
Very much the spirit of the occasion.
I didn't know the San Francisco Giants included pumpkins in any of their.
They are pumpkins.
Mayor, councilmembers, and I do have a jacket back there. I just didn't expect to come up here. We did have some complaints come in, numerous customers at the Freestone Recreation Center brought it to our attention that people were doing the electronic cigarettes there, and they were concerned, they, originally, the perception was it was cigarettes, and so they said, people are smoking in the building, and so we had that a few times, and we did bring it to the attention of the town attorney, and at that point in time, we did put in, to place a rule at this point, that is just a rule that indicates we're requesting that people do not use electronic cigarettes within the Freestone Recreation Center because there were complaints and concerns by those members utilizing the building.
Thank you. Good question. And thank you for being available. Other questions or comments? Councilmember Cooper?
Question for council. When we met last, there was a, just a very quick reaction to the question about town vehicles and that they may be included in this policy. I look at the, I look at it and wonder if, because it says government buildings and there's a definition there, if there isn't another definition somewhere else in the code that might count as town vehicles or, because I think, I'd like us to consider tonight adding town vehicles.
Mayor, Councilman Cooper, that could be easily done with the insertion of the words "to include town vehicles" or "including town vehicles."
Okay.
Within the definition of government, this is a little bit awkward because it's, you know, technically government building, but a motion to change the definition to government building or vehicle means any enclosed area, that can be easily changed.
Town manager?
Mayor, Councilman Cooper, we can also address that through the personnel manual and update our manual to reflect that no employees are allowed to have e-cigarettes in our town vehicles.
Okay, well, I like it in the code as well, so I like the suggestion. Now, enclosed buildings doesn't seem to include a parking garage, parking structure, like that to be part of our discussion tonight, too, if that's something that.
Mayor, Councilman Cooper, that would be correct, because first of all, it would not be enclosed, and secondly, it would, it's not used for governmental purpose. In that it's used for, it's, it's used, well, I suppose that's debatable as to governmental purpose, but what is intended to be reached here are things like, whereas that's more as a business, what this is intended to reach is more things like the library, the Freestone Rec Center, senior centers, and this building, as well as, you know, the buildings in the governmental complex, has to pose the buildings that the town owns that are used either for business purposes or other purposes.
Thank you. I just throw that out for conversation here.
Vice Mayor Cook?
Mike, what about some of the buildings that we own, but we provide an agreement with, like with the Chamber and also with St. Xavier's building? How does, how does that fall into play?
Mayor, Councilman Cook, or Vice Mayor Cook, those would not be used for governmental purposes.
And that's the definition, is governmental purposes at that point?
Yes, yes.
Councilmember Daniels?
Sorry. You know, we do have other types of enclosed buildings, restrooms at parks, park and ride, other places like that. I just want us to be clear whether we are or we aren't, including those types of facilities. There's, you know, we have, we have those at all of our, all of our parks, Discovery and Crossroads actually doesn't have any, but.
A restroom, Mayor, Councilwoman Daniels, a restroom at a public park, I would believe, would be a governmental purpose.
Just wanted to make sure.
However, a park and ride facility would not be enclosed.
Understood, but there are restrooms just adjacent to it. The only reason I ask, and I, of course, don't mean to put anybody on the spot or make this awkward, an awkward conversation in any way, shape, or form, but we do, I think we need to be specific in our code so that there isn't confusion later on down the road about what is and isn't considered a building utilized for government purposes. So I just, I just would like to provide some clarification as we move forward.
And the park and ride restroom is also where we have the farmer's markets. On a Saturday, there could be a lot of people there, and clarification would be good.
Mayor, members of the council, and that can be adjusted if you, if you wish to have us come back with a more specific definition addressing some of these particular items.
So for council discussion, Councilmember Cooper is recommending little additional wording of parking garages and then also restrooms.
Well, couldn't we just take out buildings utilized for governmental purpose? Not that I want to wordsmith this, but we can say any town-owned government building or facility, and that would indicate anything, any building that the town owned, not just those used for a government purpose.
And vehicles. Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, I think if we're talking about a building that we're leasing to someone else or they're operating, like St. Xavier, wouldn't it make more sense to just, they're operating it, let them make their own rules related to their operation? So I don't know if I'm comfortable with changing that definition.
Town-operated.
The way they've done it, I think, is pretty good. We could just add vehicles if you wanted, but.
That's fine.
So to our town attorney, I'm hearing the council comfortable with what we've got, and then vehicles and parking structures and other town buildings, but not necessarily where a St. Xavier or other would be using a town facility. If you can put all that wording together, we may be there.
Mayor, just, may I?
Please.
I just, we don't, I don't think this is the case right now, but in the future, and it has been in the past, a case where the Town of Gilbert has leased space owned by others for governmental purposes. And, I mean, it'd be really easy to insert that now as opposed to later, having to come back if we have some leased space, and then it's a problem. So owned or leased and operated. So owned or leased and operated for da-da-da-da, you know?
Mayor, we have had some feedback from at least one business organization in Gilbert, and they've got concerns about this. And it sounds like we've got some tweaks to the ordinance that we're looking at. I personally would prefer, I don't think there's an emergency with this. I think more feedback is better than less so that we can consider all angles. I would prefer we continue it to the next meeting, and then we can work out the kinks and make sure we have a properly written ordinance. Plus, the way it's written went through the full vetting, and as Councilmember Cooper often points out, that wouldn't quite give it that opportunity if we change it on the fly here tonight. So I think that might be a, at least that would be my preference.
Thank you. Comments, feedback on that? Vice Mayor Cook?
Well, I want to go back to the parking garage. It just seems like that's just, you know, stacks of, you know, cars that are parked. Again, did I get that understood, that you would want that be included in the ordinance?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, I just wanted to have that discussed tonight. I wanted to make sure that we had that conversation. Our particular parking garage does have some enclosed areas, and so maybe that would be enough. I don't have to have that. I just wanted to make sure we discussed it openly.
The, if we did continue it, various comments, and we may not be 100% clear on what we're asking for, but do you feel like that would help you to have a little more time to get something in writing?
Mayor, members of the council, yes, that would be fine. The only thing I don't know quite what to do with is the parking garage.
Okay. Let's keep talking about that for a minute. So to Councilmember Cooper, maybe the stairs, you go up, there might be an enclosed area. Would you think that would be what we were trying to find, or is it the whole parking garage?
I think whatever we do, we just need to be really intentional about it so that it's very clear where we do and do not wish. I'm fine if we move forward without the parking structure, and if we find out that it's a problem, we can, and even in other government-type-owned facilities, be it parks or whatever it ends up being, we can come back and have that type of discussion. But I think primarily that the question mark that remains is that we now have a rule posted in Freestone, in Freestone Rec Center that's essentially unenforceable. And we don't want to leave ourselves open to that type of discussion in a public place. And so I'm very much in favor of moving forward, Mayor, with what we have, including town-owned vehicles, with the understanding that we want to be really intentional. So at this time, we're not including the parking garage, but we are including any government-owned enclosed facility utilized for a government purpose. And I think if we say it in that type of way, it's essentially the way that it's written, but we've made statements and been very clear about what that means.
Sure. And the Councilmember Peterson, thank you. And feedback is good, and this is one that potentially we wouldn't have to rush. That might be an exception where a Freestone Parker would help. When we have a lot of interest, sometimes it's nice to at least bring closure if we can, and all the citizens that came then would know. So let's just take a couple minutes. If we can bring closure, let's try. And if we can't, then let's take some more time. So if we can bring closure, I'd like to attempt.
Mayor, I just want to try a motion.
Please.
That's okay. And this just reflects my preference that if we are going to change it on the fly, that we would continue it. So I'm just going to, I move to approve item 28 as originally presented by staff.
Is there a second or any discussion?
No, not yet.
I'll amend the motion. Oh, it has to have a second. That's what I was waiting for.
Second.
Okay. I'll amend the motion that we approved the ordinance as it's been presented with a couple of minor changes. One, that town-owned vehicles are added. Somehow, you work in the concept of town leased properties, not the ones that we're leasing for government purposes from others. And did I have anything else? I think those are the...
There is one more important thing that I have not done. I closed the public hearing on 28, so we can vote on it.
Mayor, members of the council, particularly Councilman Cooper, earlier we had discussed striking the phrase on the government building definition and "used for governmental purposes." Do you wish to have that stricken or included?
I don't on my motion.
Okay. All right. So let's see, we had an amendment.
Point of order, can I just clarify? So is that in the motions currently, or has that been removed?
The motion that Councilman Cooper, Mayor and Councilman Taylor, the motion that Councilman Cooper made was to amend the definition of government buildings to include town vehicles and include enclosed areas owned or leased and operated by the town of Gilbert. Now, the question I had was, do I strike the phrase "and used for governmental purposes," or do I leave that phrase in?
And your answer to that was?
Leaving it in.
Leaving it in. Councilmember Taylor, did that answer the question?
That helps, and I'll second the motion. I don't know that it was seconded.
Okay. So we have an amendment to the motion and a second. And let's vote on that. Okay, that's approved with a 6-1 vote, and...
Back to the amended motion now.
Back to the amended motion.
Mayor, members of council, that's correct. It's the main motion is amended by the amendment that just passed.
Okay. And a yes vote, as we just said, if we, as we vote, would be a yes to what Councilmember Cooper said.
That's correct.
Okay, so, please vote. Okay, that's approved with a 6-1 vote. Thank you.
Forgive us if we seem slightly confused. We've actually, we're on our fifth hour of meetings tonight, so we're still wacky, though.
Now, to those who came, I wish to, in representing the council, thank you. There were a lot of emails and great information that came, and it was read and discussed on Tuesday and then some tonight. One interesting comment I give, that as many of you did say, the e-cigarettes have been very helpful in helping many kick the habit of tobacco. And it's just, I'll do this quickly, but I had a group of college students that had three or four individuals standing by them that were probably in their 50s, a little bit older, not too old, but kind of older. And it was interesting, all the college students were just fine with e-cigarettes, and those who were older were not. And I'm not saying with 100% accuracy that means it's a generational gap, but the comments made by those who were older is that in society right now, any sort of smoke, vapor, is just not something that they would really want. And so it may be in time this will change, but for right now, as our town attorney said, this is a step to make us consistent with our tobacco ordinances. And so I thank you again for the feedback. And at this point, that ends agenda item 28. I did need to make one announcement that on an earlier item, and to our town clerk Kathy, if you could wave your hand, we have a liquor license application for a business who is supposed to pick it up from Kathy. If anyone is here looking to pick up that application, they should see Kathy. Could it be right now? So Kathy, as you waved your hand, we're trying to facilitate making that happen. Thank you. We'll move to administrative items. Agenda item 21, do we have feedback on boards, commissions, and committees from the council? Thank you. Agenda item, well, the future meetings. Any comments? Communication, report from town manager on current events. Thank you. Report from council on current events. Report from mayor on current events.
Oh, Mayor, Veterans Day celebration. Did we already do that? We did that. Don't forget, next Thursday, here at Town Hall. Sorry.
Kurt, this is a good time. Let's bring up our calendar again, and we'll just make a couple more comments before we close. As Councilmember Peterson just said, next Thursday is Veterans Day. We invite the community, as was announced at the first of the meeting, to the celebration at 11:00 a.m. here on Town Hall of Lawn and the other two, four, six, seven events that will be taking place in the coming weeks. We appreciate all community volunteers and individuals that help with these activities, including our own team members, Team Gilbert, and look forward to those activities. So that might be the message from the mayor and council together. Meeting adjourned.